Chairman Skoggins cannot make it tonight, so as co-chair, I'm opening this meeting at six thirty.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. So we are now being recorded. I first have to ask, we have a quorum. Joe Barber and Carrington are both attendings. We have a quorum. I have to ask if there's any conflict of interest with either one, any going on the agenda?
None.
No. And they're, and I have none either. The next on the agenda is minutes from the la- from, from the last meetings.
That would be August third.
Second, but Dave.
August third is the last one.
August third, we're minutes of August third. Entertainer motion to accept them.
Almost.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, move by Ken, second by Joe. Any, any discussion, any errors or admission or discussion?
No.
None.
Joe?
None. No.
Say it. No?
No.
No? Ken?
No.
Do you, can't you?
Motion to approve.
There's Tony, we got Tony's Tony, we're voting on the minutes of August third. There's a motion and a second to accept. Joe, do, do you accept the minutes of August third?
Yes.
Ken, do you accept the minutes of August third?
Yes.
Tony, do you accept the minutes of August third?
Yes.
Our votes yes. So moved. Uh, zero, zero. That's it for minutes. Next on, next is warrants. Do we have any warrants to pay, Dave?
Yes, I'll bring them up for you right now. First one is a check warrant number five. Maybe you can see that. Total amount is seventy-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty cents.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion made by Ken, second by Joe. Dave, could you read out some of the major items?
Okay, we have a Blue Cross Blue Shield for seven thousand fourteen. Our semi-annual payments of Benton County Regional Commission for the Solid Waste Association, seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two. Uh, part of our Hazard mitigation grant, uh, payments to B C R C for one thousand, four hundred and twenty-five. Benton County Sheriff for two thousand, three hundred and forty. Uh, Moe and Town Tractor, thirteen thousand. Uh, Sullivan Powers, our outside auditors, three thousand, one seventy-nine. And Tam's, uh, monthly of seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five, fifty-four. Uh, Weaver Excavating, forty-eight hundred for, uh, equipment and manpower on, uh, rebuilding some of the shoulders on White Creek Road. And William Daley, four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars for gravel.
Is that it, Dave?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, um, is there any discussion? Uh, if none, uh, do we approve the, the warrant just showed us? Uh, Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
An art vote yes. Approved four, zero, zero. Uh, worry. There isn't a lot of banter here for us. Uh, it's, it's suggested that you, uh, stop for, uh, webcam. Yeah, maybe the voices will come better in, in my voice is breaking up at times. I'm having trouble hearing David, so uh, we see you're there and we are not going to, uh, we're gonna let everybody speak and answer our stuff, so it may be helpful if you turn off your webcams and we'll just use the voice part of it. Is that okay? Okay, uh, announcements.
Lord, we have a payroll warrant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dave.
We have a payroll warrant for twenty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. And that is payroll warrant three.
For three, okay? Entertainer motion. Uh, motion made by Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor of payroll number three? Tony?
Aye.
Uh, Joe?
Aye.
Ken?
Yes.
An art vote yes. Number three is, um, carried by a full, a vote of four, zero, zero. That it, uh, okay, uh, announcements. Uh, I guess announcement I have is just a comment is that, uh, I understand that the voting went extremely well. Uh, I don't think we should be concerned about uh, not being able to social distance at the fire, at the, uh, new garage. I understand that most, most people found it. Nobody showed up at the firehouse and that sort of stuff, so it certainly is up to you whether you want to vote by mail, but I guess there is, in my opinion, there is no big problem with social distancing at the, at the garage. Does it, do you agree with that, David?
Uh, as long as we have, um, a similar number show up, if, uh, we have, it's supposed to be a very large turnout, which will all lead to a backup almost anywhere. So I think we do encourage mail-in voting.
Are there any other announcements? Okay, uh, probably I was mentioning it first. Uh, item number nine, roadside commercial. There was a meeting with, uh, Mr. Sullivan, uh, with B C R C, uh, this morning. Tim was present at that meeting and he is not here for this meeting, so we will not be talking about that. In the record, uh, when it comes to item number, there are several people that, uh, are here that want to talk about it, so we will take comments uh, right now during public comments. Uh, if somebody is here about the Hawks Avenue petition, I ask that you not speak now. We, we will talk about when we, the item number, let's see, uh, item number eight, okay? Oh, um, who, what? Roadside Commercial. Dorothy? See, Dorothy, go ahead.
Hey, hi, everybody. Good evening. Hope everybody's well. Um, I learned well from the last meeting to speak now. Forever hold my peace. I will say one comment. And I would propose that any conversation on roadside commercial not take place until the COVID has subsided and we can meet in person. I live in the area that it suggested to be roadside commercial, and I would suggest it be tabled.
You might have a better look if you take them off because you're breaking up. Turn your web.
Turn my what? No, that's actually not what's doing it. Um, I would say that that's actually not the problem. I will repeat what I said, and I will speak slowly. Good evening to everyone. I hope everyone is well. I am Dorothy Buxbaum. I live across from the Chocolate Barn in Shaftesbury. Fifty-six odd years at this address. The roadside commercial north is being proposed in an area that I live and my home and property is. And I would very much hope that as the planning commission decided that the select board will also decide to table conversation about roadside commercial until the pandemic is over and we can be in person and speak at a much better face-to-face than this nightmare that is online. Thank you.
Hi, I'd like to speak.
Thank you, thank you, Dorothy. Yes.
Andrea. Yeah, Andrea Baki. That's okay. Andrea is fancy. Okay, um, I'm a Shaftesbury resident. I live in the area that the roadside commercial is also being proposed, just up the road. Um, I would like this, what I'm about to say to be put on the record into the minutes. I would also like to ask or recommend and ask that the, the COVID, um, that the, what Dorothy basically just proposed, that the roadside commercial issue is tabled until after COVID is, it's safer for us to be in person. And I say this for many reasons, one being that I feel as though the select board and the planning commission are not putting the lives and the safety and the health of Shaftesbury citizens first and are wanting to move something through without us thinking about how we can protect citizens. I don't think that, I think right now what's most important is the health and the safety of citizens. I don't think roadside commercial topples the health and safety of citizens. So I don't understand why it's such a big thing. I know it started before COVID happened. But with it, with it in mind, I mean, there are a lot of people that don't have virtual means. And right now, as we're seeing, this is an issue. Some people, whatever's going on, probably the internet. It just rained and actually it sounds crazy, but the weather affects the internet. So I think that we should table it until after COVID is an issue, when we can get back in person. And people that don't have internet because of Vermont's rural area, otherwise it feels like an unfair advantage. So I would absolutely recommend and ask that this be put in the minutes and on record that we table it until after COVID is not an issue. Thank you.
Ben, I see Ben there.
Hey, Daniel here. How are you? I, I would also like all my comments on the record in my, I have a question and then a statement. I, could you name three people that live in my neighborhood that are for this change?
Uh, Ben, this, this is part of the comments. We are not taking it up as a discussion.
Okay, alright.
We're just listening.
Well, then I'm
It's been taken off and Dorothy.
Well, I'm with, uh, Andrea and Dorothy that we should table this and any discussion of the changes to, um, roadside commercial in my R R eighty district.
Okay, thank you.
And I have found no one i- in favor of it.
Okay. Robert?
Well, I'm a resident of Shaftesbury. I can almost see from my house that area of roadside commercial. I'm to the, I'm on the east side of about a half a mile from, um, Clearbrook Farm. As the crow flies. Um, I would like to add my name to the, to Dorothy's and Ben's and Andrea's in, um, in, in just curbing the discussion uh, until we can meet in person on the roadside commercial uh, district, uh, proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Want to speak about this? Yes, go ahead.
This is Ellen, of course, is next to me on the couch here. I'm David Rosner. On, we're on Old Depot Road and I wanted to say two things briefly, uh, in support of Ben and Dorothy, Robert's comments, Andrea's comments. Hope I haven't, uh, left anyone out. Uh, yeah, we also very much oppose the, uh, any possible change to R C zoning in the most recent, um, proposal. Uh, we think, uh, economic development is important and, uh, a laudable and, and, you know, central idea. We don't think that the uh, proposal that's mentioned is going to achieve the goal in a satisfactory way and will hope to speak in more detail about that in the weeks and months to come, or I should say, and this goes to the second point I want to make, at the appropriate time. Um, in, in our view, this is not an appropriate time to be discussing a matter of this significance. Um, it, it, it was represented to the select board a while back that uh, the only difficulties with conducting this, uh, discussion and debate in the public were occasional internet glitches, but I think that the problem is more profound than that. The public, uh, has not only an interest, a compelling interest, but has a need to be able to discover, that is, research and discover information about the issue to interact with each other as we all customarily do by attending meetings with our representatives, board and commission meetings, discussing with each other, exchanging ideas, phone numbers. And I can name two or three, although I won't, you know, for privacy's sake, glad to let you know, otherwise, once I get their permission. Just two or three neighbors among a number who are opposed to the idea, were trying to find out more, who don't have internet or don't have the adequate, uh, access. Three neighbors, I think, just on our little stretch of Old Depot Road, so part of it is the inability to get adequate information, uh, to research the information, to discuss and evaluate the information, and then as a part of a number of citizens actually to find out much of anything at all. So both on the substance and on the communication, I don't think it's a petty issue. In fact, I think that's part of what the country itself is debating right now in a much broader way about what democratic participation in a society like ours really means. When it comes to schooling, when you're talking about opening schools imminently and lives of children and their family members are at stake, I, I suppose an argument could be made, look, we have to discuss this in our boards and commissions by whatever means are necessary. This is imminent one, uh, and we'll have to make some allowances. But here, as important as economic development is, uh, it's a challenge that will be with us next year. It will be equally addressable, uh, next year. We won't be forsaking the mission of the board or the commission or what we all want in Shaftesbury to conduct this at a time that allows us to participate, really become educated and hopefully make a decision that all of us or the great majority of us can get behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? On the, uh, roadside commercial? Did I hear somebody?
Yes, you did. Hi, my name is Ellen.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Ellen Schutz. I echo, uh, what everyone else was saying. I do want to add just one more little piece about, uh, conducting this kind of business, which is not emergency business, uh, at a time that we're facing this major pandemic. It's, uh, of course, there is the issue of people having access to getting online, being able to get online. The, uh, total inadequacy of really trying to communicate well online about matters like this. But also, I don't know about all of you, but this, there's a lot of people who are having a hard time focusing right now. They have a lot of other stuff they have to worry about. And to throw this on their plate when they don't have time to look at uh, feels really, really wrong. And that is not what I feel a democracy should be about. If you're gonna try to do something that changes people's lives in a major community, you are to the community, you need a time where they can focus on it. So I think that's an additional problem, and I don't think, uh, uh, it's being addressed. And it's really disturbing to me that this is the approach the board is taking. I'd also like to say that, uh, both myself and David have sent letters to the entire select board that we've asked, uh, opposing, uh, this roadside commercial, and we had asked and do hope that that will be placed in the minutes. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Tom, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thanks.
Tom, go ahead.
Uh, I, I concur with the group that is, uh, requesting the select board to table this, this discussion until we can meet in person. I, I just think it's the right thing to do, and I, I'm not gonna beat that horse to death because obviously people have spoke more eloquently than I could to that subject. The second comment I have is I, uh, uh, Miss Shue. Jerry Shue has submitted, I believe has submitted a letter to every, to each of the, uh, to the select board members, and I would just like to, uh, encourage them, she would like those placed in the meeting minutes also, as well as my comments. So I just wanted to confirm that everyone received that email.
I didn't get it.
Anybody else?
Sorry, Tom, I didn't get it either, but I did get, uh,
I just got back from vacation, Tom, so I haven't looked at my emails yet.
Oh, no, that's fair, that's fair. I'm, I'm just letting you know that, that, that she, she went through a, um, you know, a, 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 spent time on this, and I would just like to make sure that each and every one of you, and I believe she sent it to David Kirin also. Because if you didn't receive it, then I will get back to her and make sure she resends that.
I did not receive it.
This is Tony. I did not receive it.
I'm not receiving.
Tom?
Yes?
Tom, I got a copy of it this morning. She didn't have Ken's. I forwarded it to him. Uh, the other ones were on there, but it came some point during the day today, so it's possible we haven't seen it yet. I'll make, I'll make sure I forward it around again, just to make sure everybody has it.
Very good, David. Thank you so much. I appreciate that, and I hope that the select board takes time to read her comments. And, uh, that's all I have to say. That part, I appreciate your recognition.
Okay, Tom. Uh, anybody else? Uh, on roadside commercial? Uh, Andrea?
No, that's okay. I, i- it's not about roadside commercial. It's about something else, but will I, will I have a, a, a time? Do we have time to speak at the end of the meeting since there's gonna be other issues discussed? Do we have time to, to speak, or is it? How does that work?
Well, i- is there something that's on the agenda?
Yeah, well, well, it is, but here's the thing. I don't know what you're gonna speak about that's on the agenda until you speak about it that's on the agenda, right? Until you speak, I just see the agenda. When you speak about whatever's going on, I might have something, a recommendation or a thought, and I won't know. And so if there's no space at the end of the meeting, I almost feel like there should be another spot towards the end of the agenda for us, the public to speak. Because I don't know what I don't know, and so that's my, that's my recommendation. That's my question to the, to the board. I'm sorry, can you repeat yourself? Hello? This is a great example where we speak personally. You know? Uh, what, what was that? Say that again? Yeah. Can, can you repeat yourself, please? I, I cannot hear you. Is there anyone else I can hear?
So go ahead and talk whatever you want to, about whatever.
Yeah, so my question is, do I have, do we have time at the end of the meeting?
This is our appointment, and it's all, this is, this is the
Oh, oh, can we not cut each other off? Thanks. My question is, do I have time at the end of the meeting to speak about what you're gonna talk about in the agenda? Because I would like to know what's going on, and I, I might have something else to say, but I don't know. You haven't spoken on the rest of the items in the agenda. That's my app, that's my question.
Would you like to know what the agenda is?
I have the agenda, but, but again, you have bullet points on the agenda, titles?
Okay.
I'm talking about like what you're gonna speak on. I'm just asking a question as a, a layperson. I'm trying to find out.
We do not have anything on the agenda for, uh, if, if we, if we're talking about something that you want to talk about, go ahead and talk about it right now.
Right, okay, that's the first part. My question to you, am I speaking to Art Whitman?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm addressing the right person, Art. I'm, what I'm asking you is, is there a, another space at the end of the agenda that you would consider putting in public comments? Because we're now have public comments, and then you're gonna talk about the items on the agenda, and then we might, as a public, have more things to say because we don't know actually what the, the, like, uh, all of what you're saying about the topic, about each line item. That's my question to you. Are you, would you consider putting another public comment, uh, section at the end of the agenda?
Uh, there is a point called review of action items where we talk about the things that we have talked about uh, uh, before and what we're going to talk about and what the action items we're going to take. I suppose you could, you could speak up there, okay?
Oh, so that's, okay, so that, so, so that's, that's all right for the public to speak, because I just want to make sure, and so that's what you're saying.
I don't know if that's official Roberts rules or not, but that's for this meeting, we will, we will let you talk there, okay?
Okay, great, and you'll take comments from anybody else too? It's not just me. You'll take comments from other people in the meeting, other public members?
Yes, this, this is, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Tom?
I just have one quick question, Art, for, along the same subject, uh, matter. Uh, I, I like to ask the question that for every agenda item that's on there, would you take public comment? So in other words, if you, if, if, if number nine, hypothetically, was gonna be discussed as roadside commercial alternatives and the board discusses, is that open for public comment?
Yes, it is.
It is, as well as any other agenda item. Is that correct, Art?
If, yes, if, if it is appropriate to what, to, to you, yes.
Right, right, that, that, right, I, I, I believe, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I think that's what Andrew was driving at. As you look through anyone's agenda, whether it's the, uh, 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 a planning commissioner, select board, as an agenda item comes up, I, 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 I'm, I feel that the public has a right to make comments to the board concerning that item at that particular time. And I just want to verify that with you, Art. That's all. So i- is that, basically what I'm saying, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
It is, so that there is public comment. Okay, Art, thanks so much again for your time, Art.
Okay, uh, anything else? Because we're having trouble, I, I would ask that you certainly can stay on and listen. Uh, please do, but please turn off your webcam so that maybe we'll get a little bit more bandwidth, uh, because the webcam does suck up a lot of it, and it is bothering the voices, okay? But you certainly are welcome to stay on and listen to, to the rest of the meeting.
Can you tell us how to turn off the webcam? We don't know.
On my computer, there's about four things at the bottom. It says mic, camera, screen, and leave. And so I clicked on camera, and guess what? Okay? All right, uh, Nolene, are you there? This, this is the treasurer's report.
Hi, everybody. I'm here.
Okay.
Um, Dave, do you want to bring up the cash flow, if you've got it? And if you don't, it's not a big deal. Not much going on. There we go. Let's see, so, uh, not, as I say, not all that much going on. Then we got, uh, a down payment on a truck, um, a little bit of delinquent taxes. Uh, do you want to go down to the bottom there, Dave? Little bit more. So we still got, uh, well over a hundred thousand dollars in the bank. Uh, this, this is the number I'm gonna keep a close eye on because of the, uh, might need to do another draw on the line of credit, depending on what goes on with the tax collection. But, uh, that I really want to get to setting the tax rate. I, I get very eager to get the bills out, so if, unless anybody has questions about this tax flow, um, I'd like to move on to setting the tax rate. Okay, uh, anybody have anything to say about the? uh anybody have anything to say about the cash flow? There's not much there.
Uh a- any, any member of the chair, of the, yeah, select board got any comments on that? Okay, go ahead, Melanie.
Okay, so so Dave, if you could bring up the uh the spreadsheet for the, say, the tax rate, okay, there we go. Um there's a lot of stuff that goes into this that you're not seeing, but um if you, the, the grand list went up a little tiny bit. It's practically flat with last year. Um so when we do the straight calculation, we get a uh a municipal rate of, there you see it, of point four 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 nine. Um we adjust that with the veterans and um the Grange Hall exemption and the Community Hall exemption, a little bit of provision for possible abatements. And the calculation comes out to a municipal tax rate uh combining just the grand list and the um the local uh adjustments come out at point uh four four nine six. And that is the number I wanted you to vote on tonight. Um if if you can, Dave, if you can slide over, I don't know if you've got it there, or do you have the, the other spreadsheet that shows last year? If if not, it doesn't really matter. I can just tell you what the, how how it compares to last year. Um so that it's, you can't read that, it's too small. I'll just tell you. Um the uh that municipal tax rate is an increase of five point six percent. Um and that's pretty much a straight calculation from the increases to the budget that we made this year. It's really, oh, I think we've been practically flat for a a long time if you factor in inflation. And it's the same thing with the education rates. Um if you wanna go back to that first one, Dave, this is just, nobody can read that. Um so the, the overall tax rate for um Chesbury Homesteaders in, in, with the Chapsbury School District is an increase of about four point eight percent over last year. Um but everybody held the, held the line pretty well, I would say. So I guess what, what I need, unless you have any questions about any of this, how I, how I uh derive any of these numbers or anything. Um if not, then then we would just need to have you guys vote on the adopting the municipal tax rate, including the local agreement of point four four nine six for the coming year.
Okay, um my, your motion.
I'm moved. Second.
Was that Tony and Ken?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Tony, second by Ken. Uh to set the uh the town tax rate at point four four nine six. Is that right, Melanie?
That's right, yes.
There, how many persons are in there? Point four four? Say that again, please.
Sorry, point four four nine six for a hundred dollars of assessed value.
Point four? Point four four nine six. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Anybody would like to talk about how we write that or anything else? It's about a, a five point six percent increase from last year. So uh no, hearing no discussion, I'd like to call the vote uh to set the tax rate for the ensuing year for the, for the town business at point four four nine six. Uh Tony?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Art votes yes. So that's carried by a vote of four zero zero. Uh Dave, can I just ask, uh should I be signing these or is the chairman's signature okay for these, uh especially the warrants and that sort of stuff? Since he wasn't here, should I, should I be coming in and signing?
Yes, you should sign them, Art.
Okay, so I'll, I'll be in tomorrow and we'll do that. And this has to be signed also, probably?
Uh it's a voted, so it does not need to be signed.
Yeah, it just has to be in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, we've done it another year, Melanie?
Yep.
Anything else?
No, I mean, now that you've done that, I am, the next step is for me to get the tax bills out so people can expect to see those, I hope, in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll um, you know, and we'll start seeing the money rolling in. The other thing is that the uh, the external auditors are gonna be in the office this week, so it's gonna be a um uh exciting all the way around. That's all I got.
Well, I wanna thank, oh, I wanna thank you for all the hard work you do put into this and that's all, okay?
Oh, it's a pleasure.
Okay.
Okay, bye, everybody.
So, Melanie. Okay, uh item number eight, uh citizens petition for trucks on Hawks Avenue. Is there anybody here representing that petition?
Uh yes, it's me, Colin Brown. Let me turn my video on.
Yep, I see you. Uh go ahead.
Do I just start, do you wanna present the uh, uh, well, well, it's, it's basically about um Hawks Avenue is a short road that uh connects White Creek Road with uh Highway sixty seven. Uh we're on this, the, the very southern end of uh South Berry bordering uh North Bennington.
Yeah.
And um the, the complaint was about um truck traffic and um it's been since March that gravel trucks have been um going up and down uh Hawks Avenue using it as a shortcut instead of, uh uh in order to avoid the corner um in downtown North Bennington. And uh people have been talking about it and I, I called uh around and, and um trying to figure out what well, you know, what the gravel trucks are doing and when it's gonna end. And it, it's just, it's, it's a um, everyone sort of here, I, I, I didn't talk to everyone on our streets, about a quarter mile long streets. Uh it's just a small stretch, but um uh people are just sick of it here and um thanks for hearing my complaint and seeing what we can do about it. So um I don't know how specific we need to get about it, but it's, it's um the, the street is, is, is um not, it's, it's a twenty-five mile an hour street and there's lots of kids that live here and there is a sign that says twenty-four thousand pound uh limit for trucks. And the trucks are supposed to go around, but um everybody knows that it's a shortcut and you save, you know, a minute or two um on your trip out to White Creek, to where they get the gravel. Uh but it's just the noise and the dust, it's, we, we, we've uh counted them. It's about two, uh, two a minute. I mean, um not two a minute, but um um thirty, thirty trips per, per hour, one every two minutes. Uh on, on average, and um big trucks, it's the sixteen uh wheelers mostly, some slightly smaller ones. And it, uh, an auxiliary issue is other trucks that use it as a, as a cut through, uh cement trucks and um, you know, farm vehicles. But, you know, an occasional truck is, is one thing, but it's the constant flow of trucks that has raised everyone's attention and gotten um everyone kind of on edge. And it's the dust and it's the, the rumbling, you can feel the house shake and uh the, you know, the noise and um et cetera. So that's the basic outline and, and I, you know, gone to the GMV state of Vermont and uh uh loo- looked into weight restriction enforcement and uh the state police and just been shuffled around. And no one is sort of willing to um, um, I don't, do the things that are necessary to get people to go around that, the, and add um a minute or two to the, to that trip, but uh thank you for listening.
Colin?
Th- this is Joe. Anyway, I just wanted to say about the Hawks Avenue thing, I, I think the, the truck drivers, you know, they, for family people too and they, they do care about, you know, kids and play and being safe. But at the same time, I think the problem is in North Bennington at the, you know, by the bank where they put that, whatever it is. But it's not very accessible for trucks to use. And that, I think that's where the problem is.
No question. Yeah, no question.
So.
Uh that was, that was, that was clear enough, that was clear enough a few years ago, uh, I don't know, five or whatever, but uh definitely makes it more of a hassle, but, you know, it.
It's a, it's a bad design. It needs to be corrected. If they can correct that, then your problems are over on Hawks Avenue.
Uh not necessarily. It's still, you still save time. You don't have to make that uh ninety degree turn, but yeah, it would make it a lot, there's no disincentive to use Hawks Avenue.
Uh.
It's a, if you come past Whitman's, it's a forty mile an hour zone and you, you get, you're looking straight at Hawks Avenue. And instead of making a, a, a right turn down Main Street, you can almost see White Creek Road around the corner. It's a straight shot. There, it's, even if that corner was better, you're still gonna make that straight shot if you, you know, you're running truckloads. I mean, I, I know that, I don't, I don't think, I don't think the truck drivers don't care about, you know, our street or whatever. I don't, I'm not blaming the truck drivers.
Uh.
Go ahead, sorry.
Colin, is there anybody else uh uh on, on the webcam that to uh talk about this or just you?
Uh just me.
Okay. Um so, uh does anybody else have any uh questions or comments for Colin? Uh, I can, I, I've got a couple of questions. Uh do you feel the trucks are speeding?
Oh, yeah, that's, well, that's another, I, I mean, it's about um the trucks, traffic in general, but everyone I talked to when I, when I petitioned the streets wanted to include speeding as part of it. Uh and, and that's also, that's, that is a, a, another issue for sure. And I would say that the gravel trucks, uh which we still haven't really addressed, the gravel trucks, but the gravel trucks um do not speed, I would say in general. They, they probably go the, correct, about the right speed, but um yeah, it's a definite, I think you did come off of sixty-seven past Whitman's and the speed limit is forty. Uh it does shift it down to twenty-five, but you know, you've got momentum and there it is. Uh in the morning especially, uh it's, it's, you know, you're going forty again pretty soon, I don't know. Um but I, I wanted to focus on the trucks and not the speeding, but well, if I could just point out a couple of things, I don't wanna waste time. I mean, you guys got a busy thing here, but um um I don't know how long, I, I think it's the same time maybe they did the uh, the corner down in North Bennington, Main Street. But they also painted a double yellow line on our street. Um it used to be just uh, uh, there were no lines at all, like Grandview, you turn up the hill. And I think that is a continuation mentally, when you see that double line of, of a continuation of the highway uh from si- from sixty-seven, that, you know, you just keep on going um on the highway. And there's a little sign that says, highway going this way. But yeah, speeding.
So.
Only a kid, go ahead, sorry.
No, there is a stop sign, you know, yes, forty miles an hour, but they come to a complete stop there at the foot of Grandview's street and then they start up again and go down Hawks Avenue, so.
Oh, yeah.
I, I just, I wanna make sure that they're not speeding. You also mentioned that, now thi- this is a, this is a blacktopper, McAdam Road. Is, is the dust coming from the road or is it coming from off the top of the trucks? Because they're supposed to be covered.
Uh yeah, uh they're mostly covered, not all covered. Um it's, it kicks up dust that's just on the road in a way that a regular car doesn't. I don't know if it's, there's just a, a lot of volume of vehicle that's creating a lot of airflow. That, um, yeah, I, I just said that's one of the issues of, is dust and exhaust, uh diesel exhausts. I would say i- in order of annoying, it'd be the noise first. They, they come up the hill and you gotta get, put a lot of uh power into that engine to get up the hill after turning left onto Hawks Avenue. And that's when the, that's when the trucks are loaded with gravel. Uh that puts out a lot of, of decibels. And then, and then what they do is about, they get to the top of a little rise there and I don't know the technical term, but they, they, they let go of that uh air brake, it goes and in the morning, you know, they started like six thirty or seven, that's people out. Um and if it would happen once or twice, you know, i- in the morning or whatever, you wouldn't even notice it, but it's, it's just a constant uh thing.
Uh you were, you made the comment, you didn't know how much longer it was gonna go. The, most of that uh gravel is uh specifically for the pipelines that are being laid uh for the PFOA um replacements for people that lost their water supplies and that sort of stuff. Uh North Bennington did bring in a new water line. That is over, so there shouldn't be nearly as many trucks or there won't all the trucks that were hauling for that are not here now. They've moved down to Manchester. Uh I don't know how far along um Beldon is with the uh contract on the uh, on the PFOA water line. So that's, that's where the majority of that gravel is going to. Um any.
Where does it go?
Pardon?
Where does it go?
Like it, this is, it's a, it's screened gravel. It's had all the rocks taken out of it. It goes in the, in the trench. The pipe is laid on it, then another layer on top of it. Rather than throw back in the dirt that came out of the trench, they want the right, uh they don't want any sharp rocks or anything else like that. So that's where it's going, is in, it's in the trench uh on, underneath and on top of the, of the new pipe that they're laying.
And where are they doing it at work?
Where are they doing it? Well, they've been all over, but some of it is uh top of Hardwood Hill going down through that. So I think that's all been completed. Uh.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I can't find out where they go. I followed them. It's like an ant trail and they kinda circle around down by Daley and um I, I don't, it's, it's a, um, it's a lot of gravel. I kinda did a rough estimate of how much gravel over the course of six months, that is.
It's a, it's a big project. It's an awful big project that's, that's going on. Uh I don't, I don't, I don't.
What, what is the uh, what are the uh, just wait till the project is over and, and don't worry about it? Or what, what is the uh?
No, I'm, I, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to find out all the, all the answers. We are not, we're not gonna make any major decision tonight. I'm trying to get as much information from you and, and uh, and everything else. But I was just telling you, you were concerned about where it was going and uh I know some of it, that's all.
There's a job on Chapel Road that Casella's doing through our
That's right.
Another waterline job.
But that's all part of that uh, the PFOA new water lines.
Yeah, but it's two different companies, you got Casella and, and Beldon.
Uh yeah, and I think Casella has their own trucks, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Has anybody contacted uh, I've been a motor vehicles or, or about doing a couple of that intersection down there? Because if you go down Main Street and try to make that right-hand turn by the, while you're supposed to pay, you're gonna clear both lanes and it's still ain't enough for an eighteen-wheeler down there.
Uh yeah.
Design that intersection, not have a license.
Um you, you know, like the, the Daley cement trucks, I see them make that corner and, you know, they figure, they figure out how to do it and they run over the, the curb and it's uh, it, it's not impossible. It's a little bit of a hassle and definitely it's, it's not it's, it's an incentive, incentive to avoid the corner down there, but um uh I, I don't know about eighteen-wheelers. That's not really the main issue, but um.
Making wheels a lot, is a, needs a lot more room than a cement engine.
Yeah, you know, the number of eighteen-wheelers that go down our road is, is pretty low. I mean, that's, I, I, if, if it came down to that question, I'd say let them run down the road. You get one or two a day probably, but um it's, it's um, it's the constant, it's the, it's the uh I don't, I don't know. And, and, and the speeding. I don't, I don't know, and 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 speeding and the whole thing. I don't know if, the part of, part of the issue, if I, I don't wanna drone on here, but um you know, the state poli- state police uh doesn't wanna be involved and when I asked around and tried to get a petition, everyone had called someone different. The sheriff was was called. Uh, no one knew like who was accountable for enforcing um cause the 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 laws are in place. I mean, the 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 road is rated for a certain amount of weight and a certain s- speed limit and um you know, we're here just dealing with uh, you know, things that are not. It's rated for twenty four thousand pounds and um, the trucks that are fully loaded are probably around seventy thousand pounds.
Yeah, the the town, the town did not set that weight limit. That is set by the state for that class of road, which is just automatically. So uh, so that's uh, that's why it would, it would have to be a state uh policeman or D or state DOT that enforces that because they're the ones that um, uh, they have to come in with scales, portable scales and weigh every, and they can't just weigh dump trucks. They have to weigh, they have to weigh ever, they can't, they can't be discriminatory and just pick out ones that they think are overweight. They have to weigh every truck, so which is.
I talked to the state DMV guy and he was really nice, but um, he basically said the same thing, that you know, it's it's not happening, but and that's why, that's why I'm here. It's like, no, no one wants to touch it and uh, no one feels like it's within it, within their jurisdiction or it's it's um.
Okay, uh. Does anybody wanna uh ask Colin any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question, Colin. It's Joe. Um, how how long has this been going on?
Well, you know, it's probably um, uh, mid March or early March uh and it was about the time that we went to remote uh learning and started spending more time at home. We got a kid. We've got the kid online and um, you know, it's, we were all here and maybe just becoming more aware of it. So I'd say mid, mid to early March.
And a lot of the, a lot of these construction jobs will be, they're they're gonna be done at some point, so I I almost anticipate that you're gonna see a a great reduction in in traffic on that road.
Yeah, okay, well, that's not really a solution, but I I I hope so.
Well, I mean, in the meantime, I'm just saying, I think your problem is temporary. I don't think it's gonna be a long lasting thing. I mean, unfortunately, it's noisy and it's, you know, and like you said, there it's it is a, it's a hassle to try and make that corner down, down by the bank.
Indeed.
Tony, you got any com- any questions?
I have something to say. I have something to say. I just wanna say that uh Colin just spoke up about an issue. And I just felt like whoever said that Art about that it's you don't think it's gonna be a long-term issue. I mean, he's voicing his opinion about an issue. I don't know that it's fair to say that. I mean, we all have opinions, right? But I don't know that that's we should just put that out there and say that's not gonna be a long-term issue. But that's just what I have to say. Cause if I said that and you said that to me, I would feel invalidated. I'd be really upset.
Yeah, I I would just say. I- if I could just jump in and say, um, you know, I'm not expecting the select board to solve the problem. But we would imagine that someone would say, yeah, that that is a problem. Um, and we're gonna look into how to fix it and not say, I hope it goes away someday soon. Cause it's 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 not, it's not a um, it's not a temporary problem. The pollen trucks run down here all the time. The daily trucks run down here all the time and they're all in violation of existing um, uh laws. It's not like uh, like I'm making up it it because I'm annoyed. It's it's um, they're supposed to go around. And I know that's a hassle and I know it's inconvenience for them and it probably adds a minute or two to their trip.
My apologies, Colin. I didn't, I didn't realize that Daleys and everybody else was driving down there. I thought you were just talking about the gravel trucks, you know, my, my.
The gravel trucks has brought it to the head, but I think it's, it's come to the point where the gravel trucks is is uh you know, it's the main, the main annoying part of it, but yeah, it's it's a constant um every, every farm truck, Landview Farms, they run trucks up and down. I don't know, I know that.
Yeah, I was just kinda hoping there was light at the end of the tunnel.
I think whoever said, I think it was Joe about the corner is definitely an issue, but you know, there's nothing that prevents someone who knows that that's a shortcut from using it. It's not, it's not a, uh, there's no, there's no speed limit sign that says trucks have to go this way. I don't even know what the solution would be besides like a a speed bump or take that yellow, the double yellow line, which is pointless out of the middle of the road that makes it seem like a highway. It looks like a highway. It is a highway. It's being used as a highway. And it's being used to 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 fill the holes mostly of those water pipes that were uh, you know, as a result of the PFOA mess up that is, you know, an- another example of of a company that did what they wanted to do without any thought of the repercussions. And now, now this is one little part of that repercussion.
Um, Joe or T- Tony or Ken, do you have any comments or questions for Colin?
Well, I just, I I feel bad that uh, in a way, it sounds like the police and and others have played kick the can with the issue, but I think you gave him good advice, Art, that you should get a hold of the Department of Transportation because they are the ones that set that limit. And I think they're the ones that are gonna have to do something about it.
Okay, uh, one, one, one citizen, Colin Brand, who lives on a little street, will will get on the phone to the DMV and get someone over here tomorrow because that's the kind of authority that I I can wield. You know what I'm saying? Like I talked to the guys, I talked to the guys at the DMV and they're like, ah, come on. We're not gonna get the weight machines down there. Are you crazy? It's like.
But I think it's the DOT you need to talk to, Department of Transportation.
That was the first person I called, actually. They told me to call the DMV.
Oh, really? Sorry about that.
Well, actually, they told me to call the uh Town of Shasberry and they took, and then I went from there to the DMV, but uh, it's, it's, it, no one wants to, it's just too small of a problem in people's minds to feel like they can address it, I think. And and I, I don't wanna take up too much more of your time. I know there's other things on the.
Colin, this is Tony. It's not, it's not a small issue. It's your home. But the reality is, is that what municipality has control over what you're looking for. And I think you're, you're probably heading in the right direction when you go to the Department of Transportation. Uh, we don't have any authority in the town other than to set the speed limit. So I think, you know, you're, you're, it's a, it's a huge problem and it's it looks like you've got on a Google map as being a shortcut. Uh, and how do you get off of that is a real issue. Uh, but I think if you continue to pursue it the way you are, you may come up with a solution. Or you may wind up at the same bureaucracy, but we don't have any authority as the Board of Selectmen to do anything other than to set the speed limit.
All right, um.
Could I, uh, Dave, are you, Dave Kernan, are you there?
Yes. Yes.
Um, are you still certified, are you still certified to uh do speed uh vehicle speed reporting and that sort of stuff surveys?
Yeah, I I'm still trying to do that. I can still do that.
Uh, our town administrator is certified to do s- uh, speed. Uh, I think it might be appropriate to have him do some speed checks there to see just what the speed limit, speed is of those vehicles and maybe that, that's a way that uh we can control it better, but uh, that's the only comment I have.
All right, that would be great. If there was anything about speed, that's a separate issue, sort of, but um, related, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, it uh somehow we have to, we have to come up with something that is, they're breaking the law. Well, i- if the state doesn't wanna enforce the weight, maybe we can enforce the speed, uh, and if the speed isn't a problem, then all of a, now we're looking at uh, just the fact that it's a truck and some people just don't like trucks, so I I don't know what else we can do.
I don't have any problem with trucks. I don't, I mean, I know, I know they're doing good work and everyone's going around and doing jobs. I think it's great. It's, it's just uh you know, maybe if they could make that corner and go some, around the corner, which is, which is uh I guess it just sends a good problem to somebody else, but.
Art?
Uh, yes.
All right, why don't I uh work up a little uh study of the street? I've done them before. Let's see the scope of the vehicles using it. And that will give us all a little bit more understanding of the volume of trucks, the types of trucks. Cause I, I don't think speed will be the big issue, but I can easily determine that too. But that'll give us a little foundational work on and move forward with this.
Yeah, uh I know we were not gonna come up with the solution tonight, but I did wanna get the petition out there and get as much information as I could. And uh, we'll have a, a, uh, the chairman, Tim Scoggins, will be back at our next meeting and uh, you're welcome to uh be at that meeting if, I I assume we'll be putting it on the agenda then too.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that sounds good. I I was just gonna um throw one more thing out, which is um the 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 job with the gravel, uh, the waterworks jobs that um will eventually end, I assume, um must be overseen by so- somebody who who is you know, making the call for how many trucks they need and where they need it and so on uh. Uh, it's an independent contractor of some kind, but you know, who, who's, who's in charge of all that? It's, is it just, are they just free to do whatever they want? Um, in terms of getting that job done, or is there any oversight for, for, for uh you you know, what they're doing and how they're doing it?
I, I had, I had experience with the contractor that was doing the North Bennington uh, from Shasberry to North Bennington new water line, uh, because he parked his trucks in my yard. Um, he certainly has uh a engineer looking over his shoulder as far as making sure that the pipes are put in the ground right and the compacting on top is right and so on and so forth, but he has a contract to get the job done by a certain date. He has an end date, you know, that sort of stuff in mind and of course uh, if he gets it done quicker, then he's made a little bit more money, but um, he has an engineer from the state looking over his shoulder, but I don't think that engineer has the authority to tell him where trucks can go and where they can't go. Uh, he only has the authority to make sure that the job is done right. Uh, once it's, uh, you know, w- once it's in the ground, that everything is right. Um, Beldon, Beldon is the company doing a part of that uh, for Bennington PFOA and um, Casella Construction is the other one that is doing it. Um, we, we might find out who the supervisor is for each of those and maybe ask the truck drivers if they could find a different way, but uh that's, the, I I don't see, we have a lot of authority, but we can ask them.
Well, I appreciate you, you're taking the time to to listen to it and um, I'll come back and do it again if if uh if it seems so.
If if it, if it goes on, I'm sure it'll be on an agenda. I I can't promise it'll be next meeting, which is uh, two weeks from now, but you you will be notified if it is on the agenda, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, item number ten, uh, PC announcements, or I'm sorry, PC appointments. Dave?
Uh, Art, I, we need to postpone this. Uh, Tim has the information on this. I know one was Chris Williams, but I have no documents.
Okay, uh, so we will postpone this until next meeting?
Yes, that would be best.
Okay. Item number eleven is town park use rules. Seventeen pages of them.
It's, it's quite a lot, but it addresses uh quite a number of different uh items. Uh, it's all based on the state plans, uh Bennington's plan, CDC guidelines. It's just, we, we're getting different requests now to use the park and we just need uh, it's always best to have a uh, a piece of paper guidelines that you can point to. And I think uh, this covers so much of it. And it it addresses everything from small groups to organized uh leagues, which we don't have any, but in case someone tries to come in, they will have to follow all the CDC, the State, Vermont State Department of Health and the uh ACCD guidelines. The entire thing is based on ACCD, as I said. Uh, the Vermont Health and Bennington, just give me an idea of what other towns are doing. Uh, it is pretty lengthy because it has to cover a lot of possibilities. Uh, there's not really anything new in here and it gets updated as the state and the town changes, um, uh, other towns address issues in different ways. Uh, if if there's any questions, I can probably address the questions of all seventeen pages. Uh, we do have one request that we just got this week about a a group that wants to use the pavilion at Howard Park. Uh, we don't, we have removed the picnic tables as recommended by the CDC. It's such a small pavilion that social distancing is really not possible. If it's a family group, that's a different story. Um, so we'll have, we'll have to look into each one as an individual case. We have a request from the library uh in North Bennington that wants to have a small group spread out on the grass area, which is an acceptable use. And we'll go ahead and and uh make arrangements with them, but we ask them to wait until we formally adopted uh, these procedures this evening. And as I said, all these are really nothing new. They're from different uh organizations and they will adjust as time goes by here because um, we're in a very fluid situation.
Dave, th- this is Andrea Baki. Did you, did you see where this is available? Is this on the website, the town website for us to just look at, even if it's not new? I just, I would like to look at it.
Sure, uh, it'll be on the website. Uh, I don't think Tim put it on the website, but if, when it's approved, it'll be put on the website. I can send you a copy too. I believe I have your email.
Yeah, that would be wonderful if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it was not on the website because uh, we have not approved, the select board has not officially approved it. It, we, we discussed it last meeting. A copy was sent out to all the selectmen and that's what we're talking about now. If anybody has any comments or anything else, we'll take it right now and then we'll probably uh ask for a vote, ask for a motion to approve them as they are presented now and with the understanding that they change over time. Is that, is that the right way to say it, Dave?
Yes, that's correct. Um, it is a fluid situation. We just don't know how, what it will be around next month, so we play it by ear.
And and can we say that this will not go on forever, but will only go, will go on as long as the state deems as necessary? Is that the right way?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll go on as long as uh we have mandates from the state uh that require these rules in place.
Okay.
So just a question, um, if I were to go to like Howard Park this weekend, I I couldn't use the pavilion. Is that what you're telling me? Cause it says it's close to the jail.
Yeah, we, we don't have, the picnic tables were removed on their previous guidance and I haven't seen anything about putting them back yet. I know other towns are having camps in their pavilions, uh, that's not what it says. Uh, so it kinda leaves us in a bind. Uh, a family group going down and having a picnic in the park is not an unacceptable thing. The problem with the picnic tables and other items down there, especially like the bathrooms being. The problem with the picnic tables and other items down there, especially like the bathrooms being open, it, they have to be cleaned periodically per CDC guidelines and we don't have the staff to do it, that's really.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, entertain a motion, uh, this, there's, uh, well, let's have a motion and then we'll open it up for discussion. Uh, entertain a motion that we, uh, accept the proposed CDC guidelines for the use of Howard Park. As of right now, also, uh, they may change over time and as long as they are enforced by the state.
No vote.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Uh, motion by Ken, second by Joe, any discussion? Oh, um, Tony, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Our vote, yes, uh, the vote carried four zero zero. Okay, um, DPW report.
All right, we don't have a lot to say this week, um, we, they did, uh, work on the election last week, uh, which was very successful. Uh, the garage did work out well, uh, let's hope for good weather in November and especially in March. Uh, but it is very good for separating people, it's a separation that we could not have done, uh, at the firehouse. So we thank the, uh, road crew who was present last week in helping to set that up and break it down. Because it is, it is quite a lot to do. Uh, the crew is also busy out on, uh, Murphy Hill, continuing with, uh, ditching and brushing, uh, improving the conditions over there, grading will continue as needed on different roads and that'll be in the fall prep before long as we're getting towards the end of August here. Um, basically the plans this week are just to continue on with ditching and grading. Uh, we will start the second round of mowing probably mid-month, next month, I believe is the date for that. And, uh, we will, are moving ahead with the Shasbury Hollow Culvert Project. We will be buying the culvert before long, uh, to save money, it won't go until next year, but we can save money by buying it now. And it'll be stored, uh, on our property. Uh, I believe there was talk earlier about, uh, the auction, which isn't necessarily DPW, but I'll mention it anyway. The items that the town is selling are online, uh, uh, uh-oh, it has the name of the auction company, uh, but it is, uh, we'll get it on the website. It's, uh, online bidding, because we can't have an in-person auction, uh, this is all heavy and used equipment. Um, so if anybody's interested, we can get that information out to you.
Uh, is the garage part of the auction?
No, the, the garage is not part of the auction right now, I just received the, uh, environmental report. So we're good to go to get it out there and, uh, we will see what we get in response to that. I'll get that out probably the end of next week, beginning of September, and we'll see, um, what instances we have. I know it's cheap metal, it used to be.
I assume when you said it's good that there is no, uh, asbestos to be evaded on there?
Correct, there's no, uh, hazardous materials at all to be dealt with, so it's a pretty straight demolition. Uh, recovering ours, I know people wanna take the building, so, um, the only big thing that I think some people haven't thought of is, uh, the slab has to be removed too. Uh, you can't just have the building, you have to get rid of the slab also.
Uh, they also have to provide all kinds of insurance also.
Absolutely, you have to have a full commercial insurance, uh, that which is available from any, any broker. Uh, it's a reasonable cost for a short amount of time, because it would just be any, any private person wants to to dismantle this and take it off the property, has to be fully insured to our, uh, commercial standards. But that, that shouldn't be too much of an obstacle if you are looking to get a building this size at a pretty decent price.
Okay. Okay, um, that it for, uh, in, in mowing, in mowing the middle part of starting, uh, that's when the rented, rented mower will be here in the middle of, uh, September?
Yeah, I believe that's the, the date.
And, uh, pretty much a full crew, are we still going, uh, uh, cycling through vacations?
Uh, we're still, uh, working through vacations, we do have a very, uh, good, uh, uh, DPW worker, works for Cemetery Committee, works for DPW, does the parks and assists, uh, on the regular crew on certain days. Uh, so it's, it's working out well, we're continuing to move forward. Uh, the crew's been doing a great job, I think anybody driving around the roads last year can see, uh, marked improvements in, in everything.
Uh, there's absolutely no doubt, uh, I think, uh, a, a big thank you goes out to the whole crew. Um, somehow we probably ought to get that, uh, message to them.
Yes, yes, I have received compliments from the crew too, on the work they've done. Everyone's appreciating it.
So, uh, that it for DP, any, any questions from any of the selectmen on this one?
No.
None. Uh, other business? Anybody have any other business? Okay, action items, uh, the one I remember was that the, uh, they was gonna work on a survey on Hawks Avenue, uh, including some speed, uh, surveys. Plus, uh, a survey of the type of trucks and so on and so forth. Anything else? Okay?
Yeah, Art?
Yes, Ken?
Um, I just thought of something, it meant somebody mentioned, uh, when we were having that discussion about, uh, getting the DMV police down there to cut the way out of trucks. If you notice, coming in and, uh, out of New York State, on the new road up there, they have a huge area where they pull out trucks and lay them and tackle for safety. You could never do that on Hawks Avenue, because you'd have a traffic jam, you'd never get out, get over. Uh, cause they have to weigh each individual axle on those trucks.
Yeah, they have, they have to weigh every truck too.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay, now, that, no, there's, there's, there's a lot of things we gotta consider and that's, uh, and we certainly will be talking about it in the future.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, Dorothy?
Hey, I'm not quite sure where we are, review of action items or other business, so tell me if I'm okay to speak now.
We, we've already done other business, uh, so we're on review of actions right now.
So it's okay for me to speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks, um, several of us from the public had brought up, uh, about trying to table the roadside, uh, commercial until the COVID is, uh, gone. And do you have to vote on that? How is that handled? Um, I know with the planning commission, they voted it immediately, is that something you, you do now? How does that work?
Um, we aren't gonna do anything until the planning commission comes, comes before us with they, with their recommendation. So, uh, I don't see how, there's no, I don't see as it's necessary for us to table it because there is nothing to table, because they haven't come to us with a recommendation yet. And they, they've tabled it, so it'll be, it'll be up to them.
But you, you have it on the agenda tonight as point nine, so.
But because, because there was some, uh, there was a, uh, a meeting with Jim Sullivan from BCRC, that took place, but the man who had the meeting is not here, so there's not much to report. So that was going to report on what BCRC had to say about it, okay? Just some more input.
Okay, so at the next select board meeting, Tim will report of what happened at that with him and, um, Jim Sullivan and.
If, if, if he chooses to put it on the agenda, yes.
Really, okay, wouldn't, wouldn't that be on the agenda?
I don't wanna speak for Mr. Skoggins, he is the chairman, he, he sets up the agenda.
So the fact that we've asked, uh, any discussion of RC be tabled and COVID is over just does not come into play?
I don't know what you mean, if you're looking, there, there's no need for us to take a, take a motion on it because it's going to be, we haven't received any recommendation from the planning commission.
Interesting, alright, I'm thoroughly confused, thank you.
Yeah, Dorothy, Dorothy, this is Tony.
Hey, Tony.
Uh, you're, I think you are thinking that we have the power to change the zoning now, we do not.
No, I understand that.
Okay, so, so the, the committee that, that will present is the planning commission. And then, so, and that's going to have hearings. Uh, when those, if and when they decide they're going to address this. We are the last people, the last official group and then it's voted on by the voters of Shasbury. So this issue is far from over, but we are not the ones that will change it. It is a process that will continue, uh, and at this point, it has been tabled as far as we're concerned.
May I step in? I have a question based on what Tony just said. I, ooh, maybe last week, I don't know what meeting it was on, coming to all the meetings now, I'm getting confused. I did hear Tim Skoggins say that if the planning commission couldn't make it happen, that the select board would just try to push it through, he said, I have the power to do that, so.
No.
Oh, really? I was at that meeting.
No, Andrea, I was the one who made the motion to table it and it was approved.
Why did he say that then?
I, 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 I don't think it was correct in what you're interpreting.
Oh, okay, then if I could, so I would like to make a request that I got the live, excuse me, I would like to finish, thank you. I would like to make a recommendation and ask that I get the, um, key live meetings from CAT TV or whomever, the planning commission and, um, the select board for the last two months. Because I've heard things and I'm not crazy and I really don't appreciate being told that I'm misinterpreting something when someone says something. Um, that's public record, so I, I should be able to get that and anybody else from the public should be able to get that as well. I'm curious if you tabled it, my question number two is, well then why is the planning or the zoning alternative on the agenda? I'm very confused, if you could explain that?
We were gaining.
If it's tabled, why are you talking about anything to do with the, the issue itself? If it's the planning commission, you're waiting for the planning commission to bring their information that they tabled through October. If you're waiting for that information to come to the select board, why is it that you have something about that tabled issue on the agenda? That is why I'm confused and I don't, I feel like that, that, that's what I'd like to be explained.
There was, there was a comment from BCRC that we felt we should listen to. That's all. There was a comment from BCRC in the, and that meeting did happen and so we need to hear what that, what that comment was.
So then it's not really tabled then? Right? I mean, if you're, I mean, I understand that the BCRC is trying to help you, but the idea is if something is tabled, it can't be half-tabled, it's gotta be one hundred percent tabled. Because then, at that point, that's miscommunication and the public is confused. Myself, and I'm not gonna speak for others with names, but I've had many people come to me and they are confused as well. And I think that if we want transparency with Shasbury, which I want, I want this, uh, community to be transparent and everybody to understand what's going on, which is what transparency is. Um, I would just recommend that if you're gonna table something, you fully, one hundred percent table it. Otherwise, it doesn't, it feels like there's something sketchy going on and I don't like that feeling. And neither do other Shasbury residents.
Andrea, this can hurt it, is I understand, is, is I understand that all, all the thing that I know is being talked about. And nothing is gonna happen until the town votes that it is.
That's fine, but tabling the issue means not talking about the issue. When I was at the planning commission meeting last week, Chris Williams tried to talk about the issue that was tabled and people from the community had to remind him, no, you cannot talk about this. So my, what I'm saying is if our leaders are saying it is tabled, it needs to be fully tabled. Otherwise, that's not tabled, you can't use the word table and you have to say it's ten percent tabled. Tabled means you're not talking about the issue at all, even if it's not being voted on until later, that is my understanding. I think that it can, I recommend it should be completely tabled and the, and then it's not on the agenda until, until when you decide it's tabled, October. What was it, October thirteenth? Twenty twenty? Is that the date? Does, does anybody know?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy. I know it can't be voted on, but, but why are we even having discussion? That's an unfair advantage for the people that wanna push it through. I am not one of those people, I oppose a proposal. Does anybody have anything to say? I mean, I'm asking a question, can you table, can you actually table everything?
Dave, I don't understand Robert's rules that well. Um, I don't think that we can not talk about it, uh, in the future. I think there's, it gotta be information that we need to gain and so on and so forth. Um, so until somebody can clarify some Robert's rules, uh, I'm not gonna make any further comments.
I should basically speak to, uh.
I, I'll look into that.
Professionals. Yeah, that would be great, thank you, thank you, Jamie.
I think, uh, this is a matter that should be brought to conclusion at our next meeting. Is the board gonna continue to talk about this or are we just gonna wait for the planning commission? Um, I can't give you a Robert's rule on this right now, I hear exactly what Andrea's saying. I would have to go back to those minutes frankly from that meeting to see exactly what the motion was. And Andrea, for your own information, uh, all these are on YouTube, so you can, uh, the recording is on YouTube, it's readily access- accessible from CAT TV. Um, but I.
I have seen that.
Okay, it's something we should look into and, uh, come to a conclusion at the next meeting. I hear what you're saying, Andrea, uh, and I don't remember what the motion was, uh, two, I guess that would have been two meetings ago, maybe even three. So let, let's look into it and we'll, we'll do something.
Dave, thank you so much, I appreciate you hearing me out and, uh, looking further into it, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. We're back to review of action items, Dave, you were going to, we spoke about that, is there any other action items?
I'm gonna send Andrea the, uh, town parks rules.
Yep.
Uh, and we'll be looking into, uh, the proper procedure here for discussion of a pending planning commission decision and whether this should be, continue to be discussed or whether it was tabled already by the board, by the select board.
Okay. Anybody else have any other action items? Okay, um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
No vote.
Move by Joe, uh, was that, but that was by Ken, is there a second? Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good, have a good evening, okay? Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you.
Thank you.